Okay, it's seven o'clock. It looks like we have the crew that we're gonna have here tonight. So I'm gonna call to order the August 10th, 2020 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're gonna begin with a roll call. I'll start with myself, Mayor Mike Fournier, present. Commissioner Douglas?
Present.
Commissioner Perusch?
Here.
Commissioner Macy?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dubach?
Here.
Commissioner Levaser?
Here.
And I received an email today from Commissioner Levaser that Commissioner Gibbs would not be present. I did not receive it from Commissioner Gibbs. Commissioner Levaser, can you confirm this? You had a conversation with her, she will not be present this evening?
Yeah, she will not be here tonight.
Okay. Alrighty then. Um, so it is a regularly scheduled meeting starts at 7:30. And there has been a request to adjourn to closed session to discuss attorney-client privileged information related to collective bargaining. Is there a motion? We have motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Perusch. I will call for the roll call vote. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Perusch?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubach?
Yes.
Commissioner Levaser?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. We'll await instruction from Ms. Schwanger when we are in closed session. We are now out of closed session, we'll resume the meeting. We're going to continue with an invocation given by Commissioner Douglas, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Douglas?
Thank you, Mayor. In the Broadway musical Hamilton, Alexander Hamilton tries to persuade Aaron Burr to help him write the Federalist Papers. And the following passage ensues. "The Constitution is a mess, so it needs amendments. It's full of contradictions, so is independence." "Yes, our Constitution needed amendments. In its 233 years, we have seen slaves freed and guaranteed citizenship, women gain the vote, police powers curtailed, and 18-year-olds enfranchised. And yes, independence is full of contradictions. Over those 233 years, we have trusted the constitutional process, balanced on the three legs of Congress, the President, and the Supreme Court to resolve those contradictions, to preserve our freedom while protecting those who need protection. All that, though, rests upon the shoulders of 150 million registered voters, 43,000 of them in Royal Oak. Tonight, we will commemorate Constitution Week in the United States, celebrated in September and by voting on November 3rd. Amen."
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas. If you can stand, please do so. Now we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the virgin and the justiciable.
Alright, so this brings us poetically right after the Pledge of Allegiance, proclamation designating September 17th to 23rd, 2020 as Constitution Week in Royal Oak, as Commissioner Douglas had articulated in her wonderful invocation. I know we have Lori Huber here today to accept the proclamation. I'm going to read it. And then from there, if Ms. Huber has any words, you know, we'll open up the floor to her. So this is a proclamation designating September 17th to the 23rd, 2020 as Constitution Week in Royal Oak. "Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, whereas September 17th, 2020 marks the 233th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and to, and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which commemorate it. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Mayor Fournier, and the members of the Royal Oak City Commission hereby proclaim September 17th to September 23rd, 2020 to be Constitution Week in the city of Royal Oak and encourage our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us, this guardian, guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties."
Thank you. Thank you very much. On behalf of the Ezra Parker D.A.R. chapter, I extend a sincere thank you to the city commissioners and sponsors in granting the proclamation in support of and celebration of the 65th anniversary of Constitution Week. This is very, very much appreciated. Ladies and gentlemen, have a good evening and a great meeting.
Thank you very much, Ms. Huber. And we're grateful that you took time out of your evening tonight to express those sentiments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. This brings us to item number nine, which is a public library reopening and services update. I see Ms. Dumas is here along with Mr. Colo.
Hi, and thank you so much for having us tonight. We're really excited to update you on what's going on at the library. Um, my name is Emily Dumas. I am the library director and I have the vice president of the library board, who will also speak tonight, Brandon Colo. First off, this will come up later in the meeting, but I wanted to give a quick update on how the server outage will affect the library. The good news is it really shouldn't impact our services too much. The only difference you're going to see is that most of our phone lines will be down. We do have our four major phone lines still up. That'll be the scheduling to pick up your holds, the number you call when you actually arrive to receive your holds, the youth services phone line, and the adult services phone line. You can check ropl.org to get those numbers. Um, first off, when we had to close our building on March 13th, it really forced us to rethink everything we thought we knew about library services because we had to move to a completely online format. The first problem that we tackled, actually on that very day, March 13th, was how are we going to still provide access to library cards? Because library cards are what people need to access library services. We began offering that day the option to sign up for a library card online. And what is good is that while the building is still closed, we are still offering that. All you have to do is visit ropl.org and under the "I want to" tab, there is an option to apply for a library card in a form to fill out. Library cards are not only available to Royal Oak residents, but also for students of Royal Oak schools and also any employee who works at a business located in Royal Oak. Now, the library card will provide you with a temporary card number for now until we can reopen the building or we can mail you a physical library card to be your permanent card. And from there, you'll have access to not only our contactless pickup, but all of our downloadable still. That was another challenge we faced is, at first, when we first closed the library, we weren't able to provide physical materials to the public anymore. So we knew we really had to ramp up our digital services. We increased our Libby/Overdrive platform by thousands of titles available just for Royal Oak cardholders. We increased our Hoopla checkout limits from five to 10. Same thing with Canopy. We still offer RB Digital, which offers downloadable e-audiobooks and magazines that are always available. And we also added FreeDing, which is another checkout service for downloadable books that are always available. We also knew that we were gonna have to expand our online services. I'm really proud that we now offer Lynda, which is a service from LinkedIn. And what it is, is it's essentially LinkedIn Learning for libraries. So it gives access to a collection of training courses, both for professional and recreational pursuits. And these are on-demand courses, there's thousands available. They can actually offer professional development credits. And it saves people the $30 individual fee that they would have to pay to have a monthly subscription to LinkedIn Learning. You can access that through our website with your library card. Ancestry.com is another service we offer. We've always had it in library, but they actually allowed it to go remotely. So you can now research your genealogy, your family tree from the comfort of your home. I'm looking into keeping that service going. Right now, they've extended it through the end of August, but I really hope to keep that remotely as an option if possible. And we also started offering the New York Times online. So now you can go to our website and you can access and read the full version of the New York Times at any time. Another challenge we faced was that the school was closed. And at that point, we thought it may be a few weeks. And it obviously ended up being a lot longer than that. So we really had to increase our resources for homeschooling families. The first thing I did was sign on to tutor.com. So tutor.com, you may have seen commercials for. What it does is it provides one-on-one tutoring sessions with a live tutor. It can also do paper reviews. They offer knowledge in subjects from kindergarten through college. And they also help out job seekers, too. They do interview prep and they review resumes. A question we get from parents a lot is what ebooks are available for kids and teens? And if you visit our website, again, ropl.org, and you click on the kid/teen tab, that will provide you links to the curated collections of ebooks just available for kids and for teens. And that's on all of our platforms, offer stuff for the younger groups, too. We were lucky in June that when we were able to come back in the building, we were able to start up our contactless pickup service. So contactless pickup works the same way that curbside service does at a restaurant or a store. What it allows people to do is to place holds on their materials and then schedule a pickup time, pull up on the 11-mile side, and we run out a bag of their materials for them to come up and pick up. There, there's multiple ways you can do this. You can go through our catalog and place your holds. You can give us a call to schedule your pickup. Or you can do this all through our new app. It's called the MyLibro app. That's available through any app store for free. That allows you to search the catalog, to place holds, and also to schedule your pickup times. What's exciting, too, is we just expanded the contactless pickup to include our seed library. So our seed library is what it sounds like, it's a library of seeds that you can take home and plant. You don't need to pay anything for these seeds. You don't actually even need a library card. We open that up to everybody. And you can go ahead and place your order online and then come and pick those seeds up and we'll put the order together for you. Another huge challenge for us was to rethink how we did our programming. That's always kind of been a jewel of our library, is we were known for having a great lineup of programming. And we had to now offer this completely, completely virtually. I am so proud of what the staff was able to accomplish in such a short time. We just finished up our summer reading program, which was all online. And they offered so many programs that covered such a wide variety. First of all, from babies through adults, they had storytimes online. The librarians hosted their own programs. They did crafting programs where they had people come and pick up their crafts. They had book clubs where people were able to pick up the book from the library. They had musicians and magicians and animal programs and book talks and cooking programs. And they just offered such a wide lineup of fun stuff for everybody from kids to adults to do all summer long. We are finishing up our fall programming lineup, too. So stay tuned for that because we'll have that up and available pretty soon. I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about some of the fun things we have on the horizon. I am really excited for the Daily Tribune. So the Daily Tribune digitization is a project that's been at least 10 years in the making. And what that is, is it's our local paper, the Daily Tribune. And it dates back to 1877. We've always, we've always had the microfiche available in the library, but it's been very clunky to try to use with our microfilm reader. And we've also had some of the hard copies of the very old papers available, which is kind of, you know, unnerving to see these very old documents not being very well preserved. So we, from a very generous donation in memory of Jane Carpenter. She was a local middle school teacher in Royal Oak who left this large sum of money to go specifically to local history use for the library. And this was the perfect opportunity to finally get this collection digitized. It is finally finished and it is very cool. I have been browsing through it, getting promotional stuff ready for it. And just, if you've ever wanted to look at advertisements from the 1800s, that's interesting enough. But just seeing all of these major historical events from a local perspective has just been an incredible experience. I can't wait to premiere this to the public. What's important to note, too, is it's available on our website and you don't need a Royal Oak library card. The reason why I want, this was very important for me, is we get so many people from out of state who are trying to research, you know, whether they had family in Royal Oak or whether they grew up here and moved away. So this is something that can just be accessed through our website. It's fully searchable, fully browsable. And it's a very, very cool tool for any kind of research. We're just now getting it set up on our website, but I hope in the next couple of weeks to have that ready to show, show to the public. Um, the other thing is now we've had the announcement that Royal Oak schools are going to be fully virtual in the fall. So it's really kind of the library's chance to step up and try to support the community. So we're going to continue with tutor.com, but we're not gonna stop there. We're really going to look at curating some great homeschooling tools for families to support the students and the parents and the teachers during this time. We always welcome feedback from the public as well. So you can always contact the youth services department or visit our website. We have an Ask a Librarian function where we can take requests or comments from the public as well. And then just the last thing I want to talk about is I have started curating a special collection called a Library of Things. And what this is, is it really steps away from traditional library checkouts of just books and audiovisual materials. A Library of Things allows patrons to check out objects. So these could be household gadgets, they could be gardening tools, they could be telescopes, electronics, toys, things that either people want to try before they buy or they don't want to commit to buying if they're just gonna be using it for a short time. They will now have the option to check out. It's been very fun working on this collection. And I expect this, you know, that with the way things are right now, it may not happen for a few months before we're able to start checking out these materials. But please stay tuned because we will have that soon enough. I am now going to turn it over to Brandon. He's gonna be discussing some of our other big future plans. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Dumas.
So Emily said pretty much everything. I don't know if I have much left to add here. And I think Emily really highlights. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
I just said, thank you. No, go ahead.
Uh, no, and so I just wanna highlight Emily really quick and the staff of the ROPL. I mean, they've, they've added all these services that, some of them, we've talked about for years. The New York Times, we've been talking about adding online services for years and Emily was able to make it happen over a weekend. Um, so the staff has really stepped up and done a ton just to make sure that we continue to have these great services even when the building's closed. They're trying to be part of the people still. So, uh, thank you, Emily, and all the staff.
Yeah, I just, go ahead, Mr. Colo, sorry.
No, you, sir.
No, go right ahead. I thought you were done. I'll stop talking until you give me the thumbs up.
Um, so I was, uh, I'm sharing with you a quick presentation about where the library is and what we have going on with our COVID spots. Um, so right now, we are in phase three of a six-phase reopening. Um, when we shut down on March 30th, uh, March 13th, um, we had three months to really come up with a new plan on how to reopen the building. And this is important to us to make sure that we're doing it right. Um, so Emily and staff, and actually Commissioner Macy is on the reopening team, along with Mark Walton and myself, all sat down and really tried to figure out the best way to keep both staff safe and patrons safe. Um, so right now, we are in the contactless pickup phase. The next phase will be a time capacity limit. We're kind of calling it the grab-and-go ROPL. You will be able to come into the library. It might be an hour time limit, but we want people to come in, get what you have made on a whole shelf, a book that you, you know, you know where it is on a shelf type of thing, and then get out. We are taking out most of furniture. Uh, we can't really have loitering because we're trying, once again, to keep people safe. Um, that'll take us into phase five, the socially distant ROPL. We'll add back in some furniture, expand the time limits a little bit longer. And that happens when there's more people allowed to gather. Um, we've tied our reopening basically to the governor's phases. Um, so when the governor moves to state ahead is when we know we're ready. Um, that's a little simplistic version. We actually have put together about 130-point criteria for each phase that we must meet. We need to make sure that staff's ready, we have the PPE available, that the building is set with new sanitation devices. Um, so and once again, Emily really did really. Um, so this is just discussing how we're progressing through phases. Um, and just wanting everyone to know that we're really tied to the state plan. Um, so the current phase, as Emily's talked about, was contactless ROPL. And it's a great way, Emily's talked about the MyLibro app. They actually helped, we helped develop the app with them. Uh, we were having, they launched a lot of that in, for our Oak, for our use. So Emily has been able to troubleshoot directly with the app maker and get features added, which has been great. Uh, but please go online. You can reserve a book, you can call the staff, you can use the app. And then you can use the app to let people know, let us know you're coming to pick it up. Uh, it's a really cool way to get the books. Um, the 11-mile entrance is currently just being used for contactless pickup. You can park there, but you get out, come to the pickup table. Or we also have four spots in the police parking lot. Um, the, the city's been really generous, giving us those four spots to make sure that we can have our patients walk safely from one side of the building to the other. And also you can return the books from that police parking lot spot. Um, all books can come back right there. Uh, so just a couple of important notes here. Emily really hit all the virtual expanded services. Uh, that's been a huge undertaking, so thank you to Emily. Uh, fines are suspended right now. Uh, that's really important. A lot of stuff like Hoopla, Overdrive, all these digital platforms. Um, we had a suspension threshold where if you have fines above X amount, you couldn't use. Um, and we eliminated those in the time being, we turned out all holding restrictions. Um, so people, if you have a ROPL library card, you've not been suspended for some COVID violation, you're able to use the library, uh, online services. Um, and then material due dates have been extended. So if you have a book at home, you can keep it right now until September 30th at the moment. Uh, we keep on pushing the state back more and more to make sure that people are safe. We want to keep the books actually out of the library at the moment. Um, when they come back in, we hold them for 96 hours. Uh, that's what the latest science says, how long COVID can last on the library book. Um, so we're holding the books. We've set up the auditorium as one big holding thing. Um, so Emily discussed programming continues virtually, it's been great. Um, and uh, we think the friends who are still helping fund that programming, although at reduced capacity. So if you have any way that you can support the friends, the friends of the Royal Oak library, um, they are not, clearly not selling books right now. We're not allowing volunteers in the building. We're not taking donations. We don't have the capacity to take in donations. So, um, yeah, if, if anyone's out there and wants to, uh, help the friends, you can find them at the ropl.org. So the upcoming phase, um, like I said, is a time and capacity limits. Uh, one big thing is the peer labs are going to remain closed. And to counteract the peer labs being closed, Emily and staff have purchased 100 or so Chromebooks and hotspots. So we want to make sure people still have access to information. A lot of people use our, uh, our internet lab as their only source of internet. Um, so you can now check out, or pretty soon here, you'll be able to check out a Chromebook and a hotspot for two weeks. Um, so we make sure people have internet wherever they go. Um, and I mentioned before, we're removing furniture, just making sure that people are far away. But, um, we just got to point out that service desks and reference are still open and available at all times and all phases. So that's, uh, you know, phase five and beyond, we're still playing out, see how it is. It's kind of exciting. Um, I'm gonna end this presentation really quick. Uh, does anyone have any questions right now about the phases of reopening?
Yeah, um, I can't see. Hold on, let me get my screen to.
Oh, there's it. I'll share it, okay.
There we go. Okay, any questions for Director Dumas or Mr. Colo? Commissioner Perusch?
Either Brandon or Emily, when you go to phase four and there will be limited capacity and only a limited number of people in the building at a given time, will you, we do that, will you do that and manage that by setting appointments? Will people call in and make appointments? Or are you just gonna, you know, let how, the first five people that are standing at the door in the building? How are you going to limit the capacity?
Yeah, so, um, you know, I, I think it's funny. Emily and I have children who are about the same age. And, uh, when discussing this, we talked about Peppa Pig World and how they have counter and they give you a wristband when you come in and it's a different color and announcements made every hour or so. All this color needs, you know, your time has expired, please, uh, please come again type of thing. Um, so that's one thought we have. Emily has upgraded, uh, um, we have a people counter that has, uh, it's able to grab how many people we have at any given time in real time. So we'll be able to see if we hit our capacity at the time. Um, also point out, our capacity based on state restrictions is pretty large. I think we're 80 to 100 people in the building at any given time, which creep, and Emily, you can jump in here. I think pre-pandemic, that was a pretty generous number to have.
Yeah, that's pretty average per hour. So I think it's just gonna be, you know, staying on top of how many people are in the building at any given time. We do plan to have a greeter at the door, too, who can let people kind of know the rundown of what's going on, what's changed, offer them a mask if they don't have one available. We're gonna have a hand sanitizing station at the door. And we're also gonna have a portable sink, which is pretty neat for people to wash their hands if they prefer that, using the hand sanitizer. But I think that that'll kind of help, um, people understand, you know, like, they'll give them the color coded. I think at this point, we're talking about maybe wristbands or bookmarks, but, um, something to let them know how, what, what like group they're in as far as time and how long they're gonna have. And just give people an idea of what to expect. And that it really is a grab-and-go phase, too. The thing is, with no computer lab and very limited furniture, too, there won't be much else to do at that point. So, you know, it, it'll be, I think it'll be a good transition back to having the public back into the building.
And you know, one thing I should mention about the furniture also, um, one of the reasons it's limited is that we are potentially starting one phase of our renovation. Um, well, I'm sorry, upgrade, it's not quite renovation. But, um, the way that the budget numbers are coming in, this year we had expected to do a pretty substantial upgrade to the library and put it on pause right now. Um, as we're, you know, budget season was mid-April when we're trying to figure out what's going on in the world. We didn't know how the budget looked. Um, and at this time, we look like we can move forward with the first phase of this. And the phase is focused on upgrading the library for post-COVID role. So we're really trying to make it more accessible to everyone. Uh, some new furniture that is, um, more socially distanced and kind of redesigning the downstairs.
Any other questions? I'll just say, great update, you two. Excellent information for the public. Clearly what you're doing is well thought out, it's strategic. And in this era, you know, there's a lot of folks that kind of raise the white flag. Uh, in your case, you picked up the battle flag and charged ahead and are really working aggressively here to make sure that in these most challenging times, that the library is a leader and that it's a place where people can find comfort and normality, even though it's a new normal. Uh, you guys are doing an excellent job responding in your way, in your part, to what's going on. And we couldn't be more proud.
Thank you, thank you so much.
All right. Well, thank you. You guys have a great evening. I think unless there's any other questions, we're gonna move on to public comment. All right, Ms. Schwanger?
Mayor Fournier and members of the city commission, we have two people calling for public comment and I will play those for you right now.
My name is Diane Carlson and I'm calling on the subject of the July 11 flooding that happened in the city of Royal Oak and it's specifically Rowland Avenue. And we, the homeowners have all filed damages claims for the, all the flooding that they keep, that they got from the water that came up through their drains in their basement. They've all been denied the claim stating that the city has no responsibility and it wasn't their fault. We have not heard anything about what homeowners are expected to do to fix this issue. We haven't heard it's not gonna happen again. We've heard there's, there's nothing wrong with the system design. Um, but there clearly is. I know that the city engineer did a lot of work in the following week to clean up some calcium deposits and things like that. But this was the second time that this street had had flooding issues. The last one was in 2014 with the sewage backup. That, I believe that lawsuit is still pending. And six years later, they had a, too much rain came down in the middle of the night and the water came up through the drain. And now they're replacing carpeting again. There's damages. And we just want to know what they expect the homeowners to do. If the city's not responsible, how do we prevent this? Is it preventable? What are our options? It would be great to have an answer to that. There was a talk about backup valve system that might work, that was a couple thousand dollars, but then we were told that probably wouldn't even help. So we're really just looking to find out what are, what we can do as homeowners. And, and for those who are now tired of dealing with the water issues that continue, even if they try, if we try to sell, we have to disclose this information. And the question is, who would want to buy a home in an area that floods every few years? So, you know, second round of carpeting and padding and drywall issues and, and damage is, is not, is not anything that, that homeowners should have to deal with on a continual basis. So would love to get a response from this, some kind of option, some kind of discussion instead of leading it back to the homeowners when we have no idea where to go from this. Appreciate very much your attention to this matter and please, please come up with some options for us so we, we know what to do. Thank you, goodbye.
It's another City Commission meeting and my name is Richard Murphy. I've called in many times and obviously I get rolled and everything else when I make my comments. Unfortunately, the mayor and the chief that are on the City Commission with him don't ever listen to anything that anybody ever says. So I am here tonight to, to call in again, as I will every meeting and participate and do my constitutional right by bringing things up with you guys. It would be great if you guys could think on your own and actually have a healthy debate and actually follow through and do what you say you're gonna do, which hasn't happened yet, obviously with the recreational marijuana ordinance, which was never, never fully explored or studied as you so abruptly told us, you know, made it quite clear that there was misinformation out there, although you really should look at yourselves when you talk about misinformation. The whole action, your, your, your entire bunch, the actions of you guys is, is just amazingly disappointing. You should be ashamed, it's very shameful the way you handled this whole thing. You know, a lot of us have lived in the city for years and have enjoyed living here. And to see you guys pull those stumps and not, not even consider having any kind of meeting with people about it just still blows my mind and it's very, very disappointing and you should be all ashamed of yourself, except for two. You had two people on the commission, Commissioner Lavaster and Commissioner Gibbs, who actually tried to speak out before they were, you know, again attacked by the rest of you. So to be honest with you, I'm very disappointed with you guys. I wish you would do your job as it's intended and not claim to have done things that you never did. Good luck with campaigns because I, I understand that, you know, I'm sure you, you got your, your coffers filled with campaign promises and collecting donations from, from all that. But anyways, I wish you the best of luck and I'm sure we'll, we'll meet again and we'll talk, we'll talk more in the future. So again, have a good evening and I still am disappointed in the, in the sense you guys didn't address anything, although claiming to. And I hope you don't start pulling this with other things like you did the no bid contracts and everything else because it really gives the city a bad impression to the rest of the area when our city leaders that were voted into office can't be honest with the citizens that they're supposed to represent. So have a good night.
And that concludes public comment this evening.
All right, thank you, Ms. Schwanger. That brings us to item number 11, which is the approval of the agenda. Before we move to approve the agenda, I did have something I was discussing with Mr. Gillum. And there is a deadline associated with it and I thought it was something that potentially we could do independent for, with a mayor's signature. But after consultation with Mr. Gillum, we felt it was appropriate and probably the right thing, the legal thing to do to, to put a resolution in front of this commission to, to affix support for what the city of New York is attempting to do right now in their support of the, the city of Philadelphia, in the, the case of Fulton versus the city of Philadelphia. The city of New York is, is filing an amicus brief and looking for communities to sign on and show their support. Obviously our community years ago worked hard and we voted on it at large as a community for the Human Rights Ordinance. And at the heart of this is really ensuring that, you know, municipalities have the ability to have teeth and enforce rules and regulations that prohibit anti-discrimination behavior for our LGBTQ brothers and sisters. So, Mr. Gillum, I don't know if you can articulate it from a legal perspective better than me, but as a layman, that's sort of my synopsis. And I would ask that, and maybe we don't talk about it at this moment, but if someone were to make a motion to add it to the agenda and then we can discuss it then and learn a little bit more about it from there. But we do have an August 17th deadline to sign on and I didn't want to miss that opportunity. And I, and I take responsibility because in late July I missed it in my email. Commissioner Duba.
Mayor, I think it would be appropriate for Mr. Gillum to speak to the item at the time, but I'll move for approval of the agenda with your recommended item.
Motion by Commissioner Dubak, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion. All right, I'll call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Prush. Everyone's got a sticky mute button tonight.
Sorry. It was tangled up, because cord was tangled up, yes.
Commissioner Lavaster?
Yeah. Yes.
Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda for further discussion? Okay, the consent agenda consists of the City Commission's special meeting minutes from July 16th, claims July 31st, August 7th and August 11th, approval of purchase orders, contract modification to contract cap 2050, community development block grant, Judson Avenue paving improvements, contract modification to contract B 1302, heating, ventilating and air conditioning maintenance for the public library, approval of appointment of alternative delegate to the Southwest, Southeast Michigan Council of Governments General Assembly and receiving file non-action items of July 2020 investment report. Is there a motion? A motion by Commissioner Prush, is there a second? It was second by Commissioner Macy, discussion on the consent agenda. Okay, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Dubak?
Yes.
Mr. Lavaster?
Yeah.
Mr. Prush?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, this brings us to item number 13, which is the proposed cancellation, postponement of the August 24, 2020 City Commission meeting. Mr. Bray.
I also have a sticky mute button, I apologize. So good evening, Mayor and City Commission. Bringing to your attention in light of the, the move going over to the, the new building, the time that we would normally be preparing for the upcoming bracket, that our computer mainframe system will be down. And I'm suggesting to you, you do have a, a couple of ordinances that would be considered for a second reading, but asking for your consideration to postpone that until the September 14th. And that would allow staff really more time to concentrate on reopening the building and all of the issues involved in this transition. We're taking out a pretty ambitious change in our information technology system as we're moving into a very state of the art building. My fear is that none of us are experienced at making this sort of a wholesale change over and really allowing staff additional time. So ordinarily, the August meeting, as I alluded to, I looked at the second August meeting last year. It was a rather light agenda. I conferred with the department directors to see if there's any other operational issues or anything else, contracts, things that would ordinarily come up at a City Commission meeting. There's not anticipation of anything else. So like I said, you had the, the two ordinances that you are considering this evening. The other alternative is to push that meeting out a week, but then you're up against, kind of buddying up against a holiday weekend. So the thought was the, for consideration of time and making the adjustment and move that we look at postponing those until the September 14th. So that is presented for your consideration.
Questions for Mr. Bray? Mr. Prush?
I know that you mentioned in the memo that from a staff perspective, there is no difficulty in extending the agenda any upcoming things up until the first meeting in September, which would be the 14th. The only one that I have a question about is the conditional rezoning of the property. If that is approved this evening on first reading, it would come up for second reading in September and that would be almost a, a two or three week delay. That doesn't impact the staff and it doesn't impact us, but I'm wondering if perhaps the petitioner would face some difficulty. A lot of times transactions, especially purchase agreements and other kinds of transactions in the business world, especially real estate and transactions are contingent on a rezoning or a plan approval or any other municipal action that has to take place before the, before the transaction can close. So I'm, I'm just a little concerned that a delay might impact the, the timetable that the private entities that are involved in that transaction might have. I don't know if anyone has reached out to them and, and asked them about a two or three week delay, assuming that it is going to get approved. Of course, we don't know that for sure. But that's, that's the only question I have. That's the only red flag that I have. And that's not from our perspective, it's from the, the private individuals who are in front of us.
Understood. And I have spoken to Director Twing and alerted him and actually I had that, that same conversation. Whether or not he's received information from the applicant, I do not believe that there's any information that would prohibit them from completing the real estate transaction. Obviously, time is of the essence from, from that perspective, but I did not get any indication that it would keep that, that business transaction from moving forward. So that was the information that I received from the director.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Bray?
Mayor, I, I just noticed Mr. Twing is, is now, I, I will defer to him to fully answer Commissioner Prush's question because he may have more up to date information. So my conversation was about a week ago.
Mayor, Commissioners, they, the, the petitioners are on the line. If, if Carol could let one of them in, I'm sure they could answer it directly for you as whether or not that's a, a problem for them.
Well, right now, we are discussing item 13. Does any commissioner take objection or, or to having the petitioner explain or answer the question? Okay, then I'll permit the petitioner to express their sentiments. Is the petitioner on? All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got a couple of minutes for you. Harvey, Mr. Allen.
Sorry, can you hear us?
Yeah, we can hear you.
I kind of lost you guys there. Where, where are you guys at right now?
Yeah, right now, we're talking about the item number 13, which is the proposed cancellation of the August 24th, which means that if we pass your item tonight, the 15, item number 15, that the second reading wouldn't happen until the first part of September. And we have good reason to, to cancel the meeting on the 24th due to the move that we're making into the new city hall. It would just add another couple of weeks final approval process. And Commissioner Prush had a question whether or not, or not a question whether or not, but how much that would impact your plans moving forward. And we wouldn't necessarily want to, you know, kill a real estate deal for you, but we'd also expect some patience as the city moves forward into our new building. So the question would be is if you got a second reading in September versus October 24th, would that cause significant impairment?
You mean August 24th?
Yeah, second reading for the reason, if your, if your conditional rezoning was approved tonight, we're not at that item yet, but we're talking about canceling the August 24th meeting, which means that would be the second reading. And so that would be pushed off, the second reading would be pushed off to our first meeting in September.
Mr. Mayor? Would that typically be September 2nd or 3rd? Yeah, that, that's okay. That's, that, as long as that, that helps you, we're totally fine with that. That's not a problem at all.
We appreciate that. We wanted to check, you know, to be fair to everyone, we're kind of bringing this in if it was a major issue for you. We appreciate your willingness and understanding as we go through a crazy.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think Commissioner Prush, that answers your question. Therefore, are there, is there any other questions or comments for staff? Mr. Bray, Mr. Gill, anything to add? All good? Okay, Commissioner Duba.
Mayor, given that staff seems confident that we can next time meeting without any substantial disruption to important city business, and I was standing in the fact that my family have to do without my 18 bucks, I will move for approval.
A motion by Commissioner Dubak, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Prush. Discussion? I guess you can phrase this one as we're all taking a pay cut of $18 or in my case, $36. Commissioner Lavaster?
If anyone has a problem losing that 18 bucks, I'll be happy to start GoFundMe for you.
Oh. All right, well, I don't see any other discussion. I'll call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Dubak.
Yes.
Mr. Prush?
Yes.
Mr. Lavaster?
Yeah.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, all right. So the 24th will now not happen and any business will carry over to the next meeting. This brings us to item number 14, which is the ordinance to prohibit conversion therapy first reading. Mr. Gillum?
Mayor and City Commissioners, at your second meeting in June, the commission passed a resolution directing my office to prepare a proposed ordinance prohibiting or banning conversion therapy. I've been able to put a draft of an ordinance together based upon a legislation that is currently pending in committee in Lansing, in one of the Senate committees, and also an ordinance that our sister city over in Ferndale has put into place. So that ordinance is in front of you tonight. Again, if approved, it would prohibit a mental health professional, as defined in the ordinance and under state law, from engaging in conversion therapy on a minor. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Mr. Gillum? Mr. Duba?
Yes, real quick, thank you, Mr. Gill, for preparing this. I think it looks completely aligned with, with our intent. I'm just curious, you know, so it's limited to a mental health professional, but are there facilities that attempt this where there's not actually a licensed person or is it always done by a licensed practice?
Well, I think the thinking would be that someone who was engaging in conversion therapy, who is not a mental health professional, would be engaging in the practice of medicine without a license. So that would be a separate, actually more serious violation than a professional trying to engage in conversion therapy against the ordinance. So because practicing without a license would at least be a misdemeanor and potentially even a felony, so.
Okay, so there's not a potential loophole there?
No, it's just a question of who would be the agency that would be doing the prosecution.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, Mr. Gillum, in terms of the punishment, is five hundred dollars and or ninety days in jail the maximum we can impose on a misdemeanor?
Yes, it is, under the Home Rule City Act. It's the toughest position we can take, yes.
Great, thanks.
Anybody else? Commissioner Duba?
If there's no other questions, I think it's pretty straightforward. I'll move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Duba. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion on the topic. Commissioner Duba?
Yeah, again, I think especially, Mayor, in the light of, you know, what you brought forward, that we'll be discussing later in the agenda, I think it's more important than ever that we be taking whatever steps necessary to protect our citizens against this kind of gross abuse and mistreatment, just for who they are. So there's another positive step in the right direction for our city, you know, demonstrating that we're going to do everything within our power to protect our residents, and that includes our LGBTQ brothers and sisters.
Very well put, Commissioner Duba. Any other discussion? All right, I'm going to call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Duba.
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Levaser?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes, unanimous vote. So we'll see this back in September, right, Mr. Gillum?
That's correct. It'll be on the consent agenda for the September fourteenth City Commission meeting.
Very good. Thank you for your work on this, sir.
You're welcome.
All right, this brings us to item fifteen, which is a planning commission recommendation on conditional rezoning of three oh five West Eleven Mile Road, first reading. I see the one, the only, Mr. Twing.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. You do have a recommendation to approve a conditional rezoning at three oh five West Eleven Mile. It is from Central Business District, Neighborhood Business. There was a very similar request to condition rezoning when Sonic was established, I believe, back in two thousand nine. Given the petitioner is modifying that plan, we've brought it back through the same process as a conditional rezoning. The petitioner is proposing to construct about a six hundred and twenty-one square foot addition to the north side of the existing building, the former Sonic building. Total area would end up being about twenty-three hundred and eighty-eight square feet, and would establish another restaurant, Chipotle. They would have dine-in service, drive-through service, and outdoor seating. They have approximately a hundred and, or a thousand nine hundred and ninety square feet of usable space, including the area outside, or a requirement for thirty-one parking spaces. They are providing twenty-nine on the site plan, and that was part of the planning commission's recommendation for approval. The existing stalls there for Sonic Burger on the north and south side would be removed and converted to some parking. The remainder of the site plan and items that are there, the access points, landscaping, et cetera, are going to remain the same. The only other deficiency on the plan that is a dimensional deficiency is the drive-through is required to have eight stacking spaces under the ordinance. Under the site plan, they're proposing to have seven, so that's one space deficient there as well. All the other items or standards that the planning commission have dealt with are in the report. They're not specific, they're subjective standards. So I will stop there as far as the presentation.
Questions for Mr. Twing?
Commissioner Levaser? I'm going to direct this to Mr. Gillum rather than Mr. Twing. The question, and I don't necessarily anticipate that there will be problems with the drive-through like we've had with the Starbucks and Woodward, but is there something we can include within this resolution to provide some protection to address that issue if it becomes a problem at this location?
Commissioner, we had exchanged some emails on this before. My thought would be to have the conditional rezoning agreement that's eventually prepared and brought to the City Commission for approval as part of the rezoning specifically reflect that the potential traffic problems that you're concerned about are prohibited, that if those traffic problems exist, it would be considered a violation of the conditional zoning agreement, it would be considered a nuisance per se. That puts us in a position to relatively easily go to Circuit Court and get an order that would prohibit the nuisance activity if need be under the worst-case scenario.
So is there anything that we need to do tonight in that regard, or is that for another day?
I think it would just be, the action tonight would be just to direct staff to include that language in the conditional zoning agreement that would be brought back for your approval at a later meeting.
Okay, and with that in mind, I'm going to move for adoption of the resolution with direction to staff to incorporate such language.
Motion by Commissioner Levaser, second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion. I'll just add too, you know, the other thing that we have at our disposal is that, you know, Woodward, unfortunately, is a M dot managed road, and even putting up signage and having our cops enforce certain things is a challenge, whereas, you know, these are all city streets, eleven miles of city street now, it's not even a county street. So you do have the ability to, you know, take some enforcement actions that, you know, are a little bit more challenging on the Woodward corridor, so, and I think to the planning commission as well, we asked the same question, and based on the model of business that Chipotle had proposed with their online ordering, app ordering, and what they've been seeing recently with shutdown buildings all over the country and how they're managing it moving forward, we also felt assurances. So I don't have an issue with this extra level of assurance in there. I think really it only reflects reality, but it also, in the event that ownership changes hands or something happens and we get somebody that's very obstinate, or the business model changes, you know, we have the ability to bring the parties to the table to resolve it equitably, so it shouldn't be ridiculous. All right, Commissioner Perush?
Would it be possible for the petitioners to speak to this issue about the drive-through? It's my understanding as well that their drive-through operation is going to be a little bit different than the Starbucks operation up on Woodward, but I guess maybe having them explain it a little bit better in detail, I think would be helpful for all of us.
The challenge is we do have a motion on the table, so unless, I mean, I can bend the rules, that's not a problem, I just want to make sure there's no objection from my fellow commissioners if I break Robert's rules. Any objections? Okay, all right, I see the petitioner here. Maybe you can explain a little bit about the drive-through situation and how we are not going to have another Starbucks situation on our hands.
Absolutely. Just to introduce ourselves, my name is Mitchell Harvey with Stonefield Engineering, Brandon Schramm from All Red USA Development. A little background on the drive-through lane, it's actually going to be called the Chipotle lane. It's going to function more as a pickup lane as opposed to your typical drive-through lane. The key distinction is there's no menu boards or order system for the drive-through lane or what we are proposing as a pickup lane. It'll all occur online or on apps, and people will come into the site to strictly pick up their orders and then exit the site. There will be no physical ordering within the drive-through lane. You know, therefore, we're anticipating a lot lower queues for these pickup windows, really, you know, for four cars, five cars, what we normally see, and, you know, thirty-second to a minute turnovers to get people, you know, through the ordering process.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Any other comments from the petitioner?
Mr. Mayor, this is Dennis Cowan, can you hear me?
You can hear me, Mr. Cowan.
Okay, so is there a motion on the table right now to approve the first reading and with the enhanced, the enhanced language regarding the drive-through? That's fine, yeah, we're prepared to answer any questions regarding the project, but if that's the motion on the table, we're fine with that.
Any other discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Levaser?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Duba?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, unanimous vote. Good luck, gentlemen, and we'll see you back in September possibly.
Mr. Mayor, this is Dennis. I just want to say good luck with the move. Tonight's the virtual last meeting at the old City Hall, so we look forward to the new City Hall. Congratulations.
Thank you. There's going to be no ceremoniously extravagant departure from the old building, unfortunately.
Well, we're just wondering if old mayors can take one last walkthrough before they demolish it, but I'll talk, I'll talk another time on that.
Your tea, Mr. Cowan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that brings us, give me one second here, everyone. My robust solution is not so robust. Okay, all right, so this brings us to item sixteen, which is the approval of proposed city commission policy communication with recreational marijuana business applicants, brought up by Commissioner Macy, and I believe Mr. Gillum, this is yours as well, sir.
That's correct. Mayors, you've indicated a couple of weeks ago, when the commission approved the recreational marijuana licensing ordinance on second reading, there was discussion that started led by Commissioner Macy about whether or not the City Commission should establish a policy that limits communication between individual commissioners and potential licensed applicants regarding their applications. So based upon the discussion and based upon my understanding of what the MRTMA, the appropriate legislation provides for, I have drafted a policy. It contains a number of premises, but the bottom line is that the policy would prohibit individual member or members of the commission from having any expartee communication with any applicant or potential applicant for a recreational marijuana license or the applicant's representative regarding any issue related to the recreational marijuana license. I guess a couple of considerations first is the issue of transparency and conducting business openly is a more practical consideration. The way the statute is set up and the way the ordinance was developed and was approved, the ranking of candidates for a license under the competitive process wouldn't even be done by the City Commission anyway. Their ranking would be done by the city manager with input from the staff. And so really, there would be no legitimate reason for an applicant to be discussing the ranking process with the members of the City Commission, because again, it would be the manager that would be doing the ranking. So, and I guess the third point and a more practical consideration as well is that this makes it a little bit simpler and I would hope easier for the City Commission too, because if in fact you are approached by a licensed applicant, then if a policy is in place, it's very easy for you to point to the policy and thank someone for their interest in potentially obtaining a license in the city of Royal Oak, to point to the policy and indicate that you're just not allowed to engage them in that discussion. So if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer those. The draft of the policy is by no means written in stone. If there are tweaks or changes that you feel you see fit to make to the language, no offense would be taken.
Questions for Mr. Gillum? Commissioner Levaser?
Okay, Mr. Gillum, are you comfortable there would not be any First Amendment issues with a policy such as this?
No, I don't see any issues because it doesn't really prohibit someone from contacting you. It prohibits you from engaging that person who contacts you in communication. So if they have, if they have a complaint, if they have a grievance about something, they're more than welcome to raise that issue with you, but it really just would prohibit you as a member of the commission from engaging in discussion and debate with them about their complaint.
Okay, now what if we added some things such as members of the commission could not accept political contributions from people who have applied or their agents, things of that nature?
Off the top of my head, just as a matter of policy, I think the commission could do that. I guess really it becomes a question as to whether or not that's something the commission wants to do. But I don't think there would be anything that would prohibit that, no.
Okay, and if there was a problem, could we require a disclosure by a commission member if they did either have a communication or receive a contribution like that?
If they received a contribution, if you wanted to make a disclosure mandatory, you could do that, yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
While we've talked about the fact that the ranking will be done by the city manager, the city commission will nevertheless approve the special land use for these establishments. And it seems to me we should acknowledge the commission's role in that capacity in the condition of bullet points that you've given us here.
Yeah, so we discussed establishing this. What we're trying to maintain is the integrity of the licensing ranking process, which we are not a part of setting that ranking, and so we're just trying to let the industry know that there's no point lobbying us, we're not going to respond, because we're not going to be leaning on staff to bias that process in every way. It makes me a little uncomfortable, well, first of all, campaign contributions, Mr. Levaser knows well, are already required to be publicly disclosed and are on a regular basis. I don't mind disclosing if there is a contact, because I think to Mr. Gillum's point, if someone reaches out, like, we can't penalize or prevent people from petitioning their government or their elected official. So if someone reaches out and we say, look, I'm not going to discuss that with you, I will, the things you said, I'm going to share with my colleagues, I think that's an appropriate disclosure. I do have a problem with trying to overly stigmatize and criminalize a business that we just had a debate around saying like this is a legitimate business that our voters voted on. You know, there are property owners who I know have conversations with Mr. Levaser and with, you know, Ms. Douglas. I don't understand why those business owners are less stigmatized than this business owner, and I think it gets us into a really weird place as a commission. I think if we maintain the integrity of this process by saying while there is an open application period, there is no point in lobbying us because we are not going to be responding to that. But otherwise, I think you get into a really prickly place when you start talking about people's ability to interact with their government and their elected officials. And again, I don't, I don't think we should be stigmatizing this business. When the mayor brought it up, it was because we're getting phone calls off the hook because there's so many people that want in this industry, and it makes it a much cleaner, straightforward process. Say, look, it's staff is dealing with this, we are not making those decisions, we are not analyzing the applications. That's my intent in moving this forward, not to create some ridiculous political football.
Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're stigmatizing the industry so much as the process, which is very unique to this, like, the fact that there are only so, such a few number that we've decided. But I take Commissioner Duba's point about the timing of this and whether it makes sense to have a, like, during this period of time, we can't talk to them about these issues. about these issues. Um, is that what is, I guess, is that where you were going with this? Like, maybe we should say during the application process or during the, until we get presented with these things. Um, what, what was your thought on that, Commissioner Dubb?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, so, for me, it's about protecting the process, not about creating a special class of business owner that can't interact with its government or its elected officials in any way. I don't understand the value of that, and I haven't heard that value articulated. I understand the value of protecting this process. So while we are in the process of having open applications and available licenses, I think that moratorium makes sense and is justifiable. I think otherwise, it's, I, I, I have a hard time understanding the purpose versus if you want to say, like, no business owners or anyone applying for any sort of license or variance can talk to anyone in the city, uh, about anything. Um, that's, that's terrible public policy, right? So I don't know how it would be good public policy for one specific industry.
I think, I think this is mostly addressed at the process, in my opinion, as well, because this is, I, I can't think of a similar process we have throughout the city, um, that, you know, you're opening up a, a brand-new business model, um, with a lot of interest and a lot of folks, uh, wanting to get involved in a process where, quite frankly, we pass the ordinance where the city manager is really going through the applications and we don't really have a say in it, with the exception of what Commissioner Douglas said with the land use, special land use, um, you know, um, issues, uh, which are more physical, like, you know, is this the right spot, parking, things like that, um, flow of traffic, whatnot, uh, aren't on the merits of the actual license itself. And so I think that, um, you know, we've also discussed at this table that the likelihood that somebody, um, you know, takes exception to, um, the outcome, if you have 1,000 applicants and only four licenses or two licenses, um, you know, you're going to get people that, uh, have deep pockets and might get litigious. And I think to the extent that, uh, we can avoid any, um, situations of, um, any, even the slightest appearance of any sort of, um, influence on the unbiased decision-making, um, faculty of, uh, of the way the ordinance was set up, I think is good. Um, and so, um, I think it protects us in a couple of different ways with this very unique process. I do think Commissioner Dubb makes up, uh, makes a really good point because, you know, we don't want to, I think we can find ourselves in trouble if we start to carve out different types of businesses and then, you know, you're just begging for litigation in that regard, um, because, you know, you're basically then could be stifling freedom of speech. But I think to protect the application process, we're basically putting a moratorium, uh, during the application process. We're not putting a moratorium on any, um, individual or type of business or anything in the community, which I, I, you know, um, think is probably the, you know, the, the most legally astute thing to do, but I'm not the attorney. Uh, Commissioner Macy, I think I saw your hand up.
Yeah, you might have covered it now, but I, just, um, Mr. Gillum, can we add language just to have a time, um, around this phrase, to have a timing on it?
While applications are being received and evaluated, I mean, it can be timeless because eventually you'll have, um, you know, maybe, maybe an applicant goes away, you know, their, their license is, uh, back on the market or whatever, and, you know, that, that license will be filled, though, you know, we'll open up the applications. Is it, is it, we can do it that way, perhaps?
Yeah, we, yeah, we could put some limits in there. I mean, I would hesitate to say just while the application window was open because, um, the hardest lobbying might start after the window is closed. So, uh, maybe, maybe, maybe the way to do it would be to say during the period of time that there is a license available. So that would include not only the time that the window was open, but the time that the licensing process was in place until the last available license had been awarded.
Uh, I see Commissioner Bruce, and then Commissioner Dubb.
Yeah, I like the way that you just described it, Mr. Gillum, because that also covers the, the possibility, which will probably inevitably occur, when one of the licensees goes away and all of a sudden there's another license available in the city. Um, that could happen very quickly if businesses fail, or it could happen 10 years down the road. Um, but that also covers that, that time period when, uh, another business or another license might become available because a current licensee disappears for whatever reason. So the fact that it, it covers the way you described it, any time a, a license is available, I think is, is a broad enough description to cover those kinds of situations.
Commissioner Dubb, did you have your hand up, or was it Commissioner Douglas?
I, I did, but, uh, Commissioner Bruce covered it. I think that that makes sense, the time at which we're taking applications or any time which there is an available license, regardless of, of how it comes about. Um, so, um, that makes sense to me. Otherwise, the language makes sense. Um, and I think disclosure of conversations makes sense too, although... I guess I, if you disclose, I guess that, that adds weight to it where if, if a petitioner doesn't want to be stigmatized for making it sound like they're trying to get around the rules, if they know it's going to be publicly disclosed, that adds weight to it, right? That makes sense?
Yeah.
And there, there's, and there-
Go ahead, Commissioner Gillum.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, and, and, and there, there's nothing intended here or at all that would prohibit anyone from speaking during public comment at any city commission meeting about any issue they had. Um, what I intended or tried to, to focus the policy on was the idea of ex parte communication. So where applicants would be engaging commissioners one at a time or in small groups as opposed to engaging the entire commission at the same time.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I think, uh, the conversation here has resolved this, but I just want to be clear that right now, the resolution says, um, at the very end, regarding any recreational marijuana licensing issue. And I think that's overly broad because if there comes a time a year from now when a business wants to discuss with us the language of our ordinance on a policy basis, I think that is a suitable place for us to talk with, um, uh, business owners with an interest in the process. So if we've agreed that we're going to narrow this down, you know, during the, the period of time, um, when there are, um, uh, licenses available, um, I think that resolves the problem, but would you, um, comfort me on that, Mr. Gillum?
Yeah, I'm just making some notes, yeah, good. Um, I mean, the conversation that, that we could prove it would have to do with the, the award of any available recreational marijuana license or words to that effect, something. How does that sound, Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, uh, you know, I, there may be a marijuana industry, uh, attorney who's on a philosophical basis, wants to talk with us about the language of our ordinance and is, I mean, if they're not actively involved in the process or seeking an ordinance, I don't see why we shouldn't be able to listen to them or should have to report the conversation.
Well, I, I think too, I mean, the other challenge that you have is you get a, you know, slippery slope, right? And so engaging in any, I think, I don't, I can't speak for Mr. Gillum, but maybe the intent was just to make it black and white, pretty clear, however be it, for a period of time while there are open applications or open licenses available. I think if we start to parse it, someone can come in and say, hey, Commissioner Douglas, I'm gonna talk to you about, uh, you know, section 4.2 of the, the ordinance. And then the next thing you know, it goes somewhere off and we're reporting and it, you know, I think to me, um, having that limited period of time, making it black and white, and I think that if we want to talk to people about the ordinance, uh, we can go, I mean, we had 21 public meetings, um, you know, right now, up, up to date, maybe 22, where we've discussed this issue. Uh, and we've had workshops where we had citizens and, and, uh, legal experts and industry, uh, people come and express their opinions. I think that we, if we're gonna do a revision of the ordinance, we should probably do that not ex parte, but with everybody involved, uh, where we make, um, you know, changes to it, make and express their opinions publicly. Just my thought. Anybody else? Uh, Commissioner Dubb?
Um, well, let's take a stab at it, uh, 'cause I think we have a general idea of what we want to do here. So I'll move for approval of the amendments that, uh, the period this policy is in effect is, uh, while we are taking applications or any licenses available on the market. Um, and that, uh, should, um, anyone receive, uh, communication from a petitioner during that time, that that be, uh, shared, uh, in writing with the city attorney and city manager, to be shared as appropriate, uh, with the full commission. The only reason I say that is 'cause I wouldn't want one of us to email something to everyone else that the city attorney determines to be, uh, a violation of OMA.
Yeah. Motion by Commissioner Dubb, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy, discussion. Uh, Commissioner Levaser?
Uh, the, the first question I have is whether there's some teeth, teeth or ramifications of violation of this policy. And, and Mr. Gillum, how, how you see that?
Well, no, there, there really aren't any teeth. I mean, I think it would really be a, a question, if, if, if there is a violation, um, of this policy, then it would be a question of, of the rest of the body calling whoever the violator is on the carpet at a meeting.
Uh, Commissioner Douglas?
I, I agree with what we proposed here. However, I'm not inclined to vote for it, um, having been written on the fly within the commission tonight. I don't think we're racing into anything here. I'd much prefer to have the, the city attorney, um, redraft it with the ideas that we have brought him so we can look at a final document and vote on that. So I'm gonna vote against the motion, not out of any disagreement with the principles, only because I would then submit an alternate motion to have him redraft it and bring it back to him. Us.
Commissioner Dubb?
I don't remember what I was gonna say.
Commissioner Macy?
Um, so I understand what Commissioner Douglas is saying, although it seems to me like we edit ordinances on the fly all the time, things that are far more important than what we're doing today, as this is a policy that Commissioner Levaser has pointed out, in fact, has no teeth. Um, so I'm not inclined to hold off on it because the period we're talking about is right now. So we're missing the opportunity to have this policy and be able to say, well, we have this policy. Um, and I, you know, point taken about the fact that we sometimes craft things very awkwardly at the table. I think we had like a 25-minute discussion last week that, uh, Mr. Gillum managed to reduce to one sentence. So, um, we tend to be a little bit wordy and, but I trust him to do, to take the meaning of what we have here and distill it down to, um, a logical resolution that I'm, I'm comfortable with. So I'm happy to move forward with it tonight.
Okay, Commissioner Bruce, and then Commissioner Dubb.
I'm comfortable with the language as we set it forth this evening. And the only thing that sticks in my mind as to a delay, um, in most instances, I would agree with Commissioner Douglas that a delay is good so that it can be fine-tuned and we're sure that it's almost perfect. But number one, this can be tweaked. Um, if we think about this over the next 30 days, which is how long it's gonna be before our next meeting, more than that, uh, there's little things you would like to add. We always can at that time. And secondly, um, it, we don't know when the actual application process is gonna start, but my guess is that there's gonna be some kind of activity before our next meeting, which is September 14th, even if it's just mechanical-type activity. Um, but that opens the window for 30 days for people who know we are thinking about this and maybe would like to get their comments in ahead of time before it's prohibited. So I would be comfortable, most comfortable with adopting this, um, this evening, even though it might not be perfect, knowing that we can tweak it and knowing that our next opportunity to deal with it is over 30 days away, and I'm, that makes me nervous.
Um, and, and I just have a question, uh, for the intention of the, and I think it, I think, look, same point as Commissioner Bruce. Um, uh, it's kinda, it's a, it's a resolution, um, you know, I, I think we all don't intend on trying to, uh, affect the process. So we wanted to, I think we all are in consensus here that that's what we want to protect. Um, and so I think ultimately, uh, finessing the language, it's all finite in terms of its time. So, you know, we get it 99% right, it's gonna have its effectiveness, um, I think, here for a finite period of time. So there's little to risk. I think, um, the question I have those with the reporting, um, if somebody comes to us on the street and says, hey, I want to talk to you about this, and we say, no, thank you, um, does that constitute, uh, reporting the conversation? Um, I mean, clearly, if we get an email from somebody and not everyone's copied on it, we can forward that to the rest of the commission. But, you know, at what level do we want to, because if we say to somebody, hey, you know, um, you know, you're at the grocery store getting ice cream for your kids, and someone comes up to you and says, hey, I want to talk to you about this. I'm sorry, you know, we passed a resolution, I cannot talk to you about it. Um, thank you. Is that something that we report back? Um, how, what level are we talking about? Um, like a serious engagement and conversation? I mean, I guess that's my only question. Not that it's that big of a deal to say, hey, I talked to a guy, I got his first name at a grocery store, and said no. Am I misunderstanding what our intent is, or... Our own judgment. Uh, Commissioner Dubb and Commissioner Macy?
I mean, this is self-imposed rule, similar to, oh, you know, a lot of our ethics rules. So I think it's, you know, just trying to give us some guidelines to abide by and let the public know what those guidelines are, uh, as far as having no teeth, which was my comment before. I mean, it would be censure, which is the same as a violation of our ethics ordinance, um, at the will of the commission. Um, and, and when we're imposing our rules, that's, that's basically the tool we have. Anything else would probably run afoul of, of other law. Um, so to your question, Mayor, I think it's that, I mean, if, if you immediately cut someone off and say, look, if you have something to say, you need to come to a public comment or call the city manager. Um, uh, but, you know, if, if they, you know, persist and, um, share information with you, then I would think you would disclose whatever was shared with the city attorney. But I think it's up to you to us to determine what is, what is that level. I don't know how you would legislate, you know, that, that level. Um, but, uh, what we're trying to do here is establish best practice for all of us and let the industry know, there's no sense in blowing this up when there's an application on the market, 'cause we are not gonna be leaning in on that process.
Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, I do, I agree. So, I mean, in the thing we have written before us, which I understand we're modifying, but it says regarding any recreational marijuana licensing issue. So I think if someone approaches you and says, hey, here's who I am, I want to talk to you about this, and that's the end of it, then I don't think you have to disclose that. But if they were to say, let me tell you why mine is much better and I have, like, this little thing, and before you can stop them, that's the sort of thing you have to disclose. Did some recreational marijuana licensing issue come out of the conversation? Or was it just, uh, hey, can we talk about this? No. Then I think not. That's my, that's my reading of it.
I mean, I'm comfortable with that. Commissioner Douglas?
I'm persuaded by the arguments that my fellow commissioners have made, so I will support the motion as proposed.
Commissioner Levaser?
I, I'm gonna move that we amend it to add, uh, in addition to the, to no communication, uh, that, uh, commission members are also barred for a period of two years on the awarding of the last license from receiving campaign contributions from any such individuals.
A motion or amendment proposed by Commissioner Levaser, is there a, a second? Yeah, I see the motion fails. We're back to the original motion. Discussion? All right, I'm gonna call for the vote. Uh, I'll start with Commissioner Dubb.
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Commissioner Levaser?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, all right. Well, I think we got a resolution that's going to protect the process. I think we got a resolution that isn't gonna get us in trouble with, um, free speech and merging, um, official government activities with other campaigning activities. So I think we're gonna have a clear line here that keeps the city safe, uh, obligation. And, um, Mr. Gillum, Mr. Brake, I don't know if it's possible to, uh, reference this notice in every applicant packet that you put out. I think that might be helpful because some people might not, you know, know, uh, and it's good that they have that information when they apply. Uh, so therefore, there's no, uh, unintentional, you know, hard feelings if they get, you know, a pretty strict shutdown from Commissioner Macy. I, I don't, I don't think we need to move to do that, but it should be part of the application materials, so to speak, I think, in my opinion. Okay. All right. Well, I don't even have to look at my agenda right now because I see Mr. Witz here, uh, popped in right at the right time. So it must mean we're at, uh, item 17, which is the Arts Beats and Eats, um, contract discussion. Uh, Mr. Gillum, your name was inked on this one?
Mayor and commissioners, uh, when we last met, uh, Mr. Witz, uh, presented his, uh, his idea for a, uh, scaled- Witz presented his, his idea for a scaled-down Arts Beats and Eats festival for this year, involving a drive-in concert series, and also a, in an art show or art fair, both with tickets being sold in advance with limited capacity. The drive-in music event would take place in one of the city of parking lots that normally holds the festival's national stage. There would be an adjacent parking lot that would be used for purposes of staging for the, the music component, and then the Sherman Street parking lot, or at least a, a good part of it, would serve to be the site for the proposed art component of the event. So we worked off of the agreement that we've used for many years for the larger event. This agreement would define the properties that Mr. Witz was gonna be using, it would set forth the hours that the property would be made available to him, and as I indicated in the cover letter too, hopefully no issues or no problems of any kind, covert or anything else, but if in fact, it turned out that there were problems of any kind associated with the event, if there was an imminent risk to the public health, safety, and welfare, the chief of police would be able to come in and essentially pull the plug on the event. So I know Mr. Witz is with us, as the mayor has indicated, if you have any questions about the agreement, I can try to answer those. If you have questions about the event itself, I'm sure Mr. Witz would be happy to answer those.
Any questions for either Mr. Gillum or Mr. Witz?
I had one comment, if that's okay, Mayor, that's possible.
Let me just see if there's any questions, John, real quick. Okay, Mr. Witz, throw it in.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, just since Mr. Gillum mentioned Arts Beats and Eats, we are advertising that Arts Beats and Eats is canceled, so I just wanna say that in our, the way this is, I just wanna make it clear that we're saying the festival's canceled, and, and nothing we're doing is trying to draw people, so I wanted to state that one, we're calling this the Beats Go On and Art by Appointment, so our website says that, and our advertising will say that, just to, not to create a crowd. And the other comment I wanted to make is that we sent out a letter to 300 downtown businesses, informing them of our plans, just to communicate with the business community. We had one concern with the use of the north lot in the, in the agreement, just based on parking, so we have been in touch with OCC, and they are, have agreed to let us use their lot to the south, so we're gonna free that lot up to the north for customers to support the businesses of Bar Louie and a couple that expressed some concern to us, so I just wanted to let you all know that we were proactive in reaching out to the downtown community, and we are giving back. I told Mr. Gillum that it was possible that we would get the OCC lot, we got confirmation and agreement we're reviewing, so even if you put it in the, the contract, Mr. Gillum, we are probably 99% not going to use that lot, so I just wanted to share, and we had no other complaints or concerns about the program from any downtown business, so I just wanted to share that feedback with everybody, and, and thank you for letting me share.
Any questions on the Beats Go On, either in the contract, or from Mr. Witz on the, the operation? Okay. Any motions? Commissioner Dubak?
First level.
Motion by Commissioner Dubak, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Purush, discussion. Commissioner Dubak?
I just wanna reiterate, Mr. Witz, you know, obviously, my family and I are really disappointed the festival's not happening in, you know, full effect this year. I know a lot of Royal Oakers are, you know, hopefully, things will be back in order next year, and it'll be back in action, but I really appreciate your effort to try and bring, you know, some joy and entertainment.
Commissioner Dubak, because you brought that nice comment, but I wanted to say one last thing, we put out in our press release that we were sending food trucks to local neighborhoods, and we'd gotten 15 inquiries from Royal Oak, and we are sending a food truck to 15 Royal Oak neighborhoods, and we are not advertising that to the public, so people will not know where they are, or draw to, you know, make the neighborhood have people from outside the neighborhood come, so it'll be communicated within a neighborhood, and we are in the midst of calling those neighborhoods back, and people will just purchase food from the food truck, we'll cover the guarantee, so we are the, it's called Eats in Your Streets, Eats on Your Street, and we'll be doing that throughout Oakland County, not just in Royal Oak, but Royal Oak will probably have, you know, 14 to 20 stops, and other communities might have two, two or three, so I'm just happy that it just adds a little, you know, one neighborhood's adding an artist, you know, we're not encouraging that, but we're also not restricting it, you know, so just excited that there'll be some food trucks on Labor Day weekend planting themselves, so just, again, a little taste, but your nice comment, I had forgotten to mention that, that point, so thank you.
Well, I appreciate, you know, you trying to make something happen in a safe way, you know, during this challenging time, and I hope, you know, folks are able to come out in moderation, and, and enjoy this at a safe and healthy distance while wearing masks.
Anybody else? All right, we have our discussion, I'll call for the vote, we'll start with Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
And Purush?
Yes.
Commissioner Labasser?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, good, we have a contract, we have the Beats Go On, and, you know, best of luck to you, Mr. Witz, and your production team, and all the artists and musicians involved, appreciate you thinking innovatively here to have some semblance of a, of a, you know, an arts, I don't wanna say festival, but, you know, expression in a very safe way, so good luck to you, and, and let us know how things go.
Hundred percent, thank you.
Thank you. All right, this brings us to the last item on our agenda, which I had requested to be added, this was something that, in all fairness to my fellow commission members, you know, I dropped the ball on back in July, I missed the email in my inbox when a lot of other issues were occurring, and this one is dealing with a amicus that the City of New York is filing in support of, for the United States Supreme Court, in support of Fulton versus the City of Philadelphia, in support of Philly, and, you know, typically with a lot of these things, folks and organizations ask that the mayor, in my own personal capacity, sign up and show support, as my capacity as mayor, this one carries a little bit more weight, and I'm hoping Mr. Gillum can kind of explain the brief, brief discussion we had, and exactly what we're looking at getting potentially passed here as a resolution. Mr. Gillum?
Thank you, Mayor. The, the City of Philadelphia has found itself being sued by a number of individuals, and also by at least one faith-based foster care agency in the community. In terms of, of the issue or the process and the procedure, not unusual, but the, the City of Philadelphia awards contracts to agencies for the placement of minors in need of foster care, and the, the, there are agencies that determine the qualifications of the people that are going to act as foster parents, if you will, for the, for the minors in need. And this one particular agency in Philadelphia refuses to qualify any same-sex couple for foster care service, based strictly upon the fact that they are a same-sex couple, even if they meet all the other criteria that are established under applicable law and policy in Philadelphia. So the City of Philadelphia, based upon that agency's position, is not awarding any contracts of any kind to the agency for any kind of a service, and that has led the, the service to file a lawsuit in federal court, claiming that the city's, city's policy is in violation of the First Amendment. As far as the, the agency is concerned, if they have to qualify same-sex couples as being eligible to provide foster care, they're essentially being required to endorse that particular lifestyle, and it's a lifestyle that, for religious reasons, they choose not to endorse. So that's become the issue. The lawsuit was filed in federal court in Pennsylvania, the City of Philadelphia prevailed initially in the district court, federal district court, there was an appeal that was taken by the agency to the Third Circuit Court of Appeals. The City of Philadelphia, again, prevailed in the Third Circuit, the agency then asked the United States Supreme Court to take a look at the issue, the Supreme Court agreed, they granted cert, they will be taking a look at the issue. The City of New York, on behalf of the City of Philadelphia, with some, through some other organizations, has reached out to other communities, seeking support, seeking communities to, to join in an amicus brief that the City of New York is gonna be filing in front of the United States Supreme Court in support of the City of Philadelphia. So for the non-lawyers, not that we have too many on the city commission, but for the non-lawyers, that's, an amicus brief basically is a, a friend of the court brief, it's filed on behalf of a party, but really just trying to indicate to the court why the party filing the amicus brief thinks that one party's position is more favorable than the, than the other. So in this particular case, the City of New York is filing a brief in support of the City of Philadelphia's position, they've asked other communities across the country to join in their amicus brief, the City of Royal Oak is one of the communities that they have asked to join in the brief, so the reason I indicated to the mayor that I thought it would be appropriate to bring this issue to the entire commission, because they are asking for the mayor's support, more significantly, they're asking for me, as the city attorney on behalf of the City of Royal Oak, indicate the city's support for New York's amicus brief in the pending litigation. So what I would suggest, if this is something that the commission wants to do, would be to approve a resolution supporting the City of Philadelphia's position in the pending litigation, and directing my office to file the necessary support with the City of Royal Oak on the amicus brief that New York will be filing in the Supreme Court.
Commissioner Macy?
That's not a question, I was just gonna say, still moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Macy, second by Commissioner Dubak. Discussion. Commissioner Labasser?
Mr. Gillum, have, have you seen the brief that they're proposing that you sign off on?
I think you got that sticky mute button there, Mr. Gillum.
Thank you for reminding me. No, I have not, Commissioner Labasser, the information that I received, I looked at over the weekend, indicated that the brief would be available today, but no, I have not actually seen it.
Any other discussion? I'll just, Commissioner Macy?
I was just gonna thank you, Mayor, for bringing this to us, some, we don't often hear about things like this that are happening, and have a chance to sign on, and this is a really, this is a really important issue, and something that we've seen here in Michigan, and we've moved forward in the Supreme Court to get these types of things declared illegal, and so having the City of Philadelphia making this fight, and being able to stand with New York in this brief, I'm, I'm proud that you brought it to us, I'm glad to sign on.
Commissioner Dubak? Commissioner Dubak, your mute button again.
Everything Commissioner Macy said, I think, you know, this is an opportunity for us to be way in, not just on the right side of the, the law, but on the right side of history, and I think we should take this opportunity, so thank you, Mayor, for bringing it forward.
And I appreciate you guys working, I mean, we only meet every two weeks, and, you know, being able to take this on tonight. Again, originally, I thought I could sign in to this as mayor, but as Mr. Gillum presented, it's a little bit more involved than that, and I think a resolution's appropriate, and, you know, for me, too, it's, it's not just being, you know, supporting, you know, the values of our community, but our community came out and droves and voted for the HRO. This isn't, the HRO was something that we initially passed, it was contested, it went to the ballot, and our community came out and voted for it, and I think that's a testament to their expectation of their city leaders, to stand up for the principles of that HRO, and make sure that people of all backgrounds, races, religion, LGBTQ status, have protections, and I think that we need to stand in solidarity to ensure across our land, across our nation, that these protections are upheld, and that communities in the will of the people are actually maintained. So I'm grateful for your support in this, and once again, you know, sorry to throw it on you, but the way things work with our meeting schedule, my misunderstanding caused a little bit of an issue here, and again, I originally lost the, or not lost, but didn't see the original request to me in my email, or my email box, and causing a little bit of delay there as well, so. All right, I'll call for the vote, I'll start with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Labasser?
So.
Mr. Purush?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Mr. Gillum, thank you for your effort, very grateful.
You're welcome, and I'll get the email off to, to the state of New York tonight, since we're pulling the plug tomorrow, so.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to the end of our agenda, notwithstanding any other important business for the benefit of our neighbors and friends and family, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Purush?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas, discussion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote.
Yes.
Mr. Purush?
Yes.
Commissioner Labasser?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thanks, everyone, for tuning in, thanks, staff, for preparing a meeting tonight, very well done, and we appreciate everyone's efforts, stay safe, stay healthy, and we'll see you in September, take care.